Second. Second motion and second, uh, those in favor?
Uh-huh.
That says, um, student advisory.
Hi, everyone. My name is Katana Chalkley. I'm a member of student advisory. We recently added three new members to our student advisory group. This is Grace Sparkman. We also added Maggie Garrett and Ashlyn Reagan, but they are attending CYC, which is Challenger Conference. Um, we want to say congratulations to our Warren County High School basketball team. Uh, our pioneers beat White County seventy-eight to seventy-six on a last-second shot. Our boys will be the number-one seed heading to regional tournament, and will be hosting Boonawal High School Saturday night at WCHS Charlie Dalton Gym at seven o'clock. Um, our Warren County High School lady pioneers were received the District Six Triple-A Sportsmanship Award. Um, our wrestlers Caleb Mackey and Ike Gilentine had their Tennessee Secondary School Athletic Association State Championship that both placed in the top eight in their weight division. Congratulations to the Warren County High School Winter Guard. They competed in Knoxville and won first place. And our seniors superlatives were announced, and you can see those on the back of the page, and you can read all those. We want to say good luck to our SCCLA group. They will be competing in their district competition tomorrow at Mottlow in Telahoma. We want to say good luck to the Warren County High School Pioneerettes. They are going to Orlando, Florida next week. They leave next Wednesday, and they're competing in the NDA National Championships. And good luck to the Warren County High School archery team as they travel to White County Middle School to compete.
There is a soccer away game tomorrow and a baseball scrimmage away on Saturday. FBLA members continue to collect can tabs for the Ronald McDonald House. Can tabs will be collected until April third. Tabs, tabs can be given to Ms. Jamie Brennan at Warren County High School or any FBLA member. National FFA Week is this February, this week. Tomorrow is Blue and Gold Day. The Warren County High School will be cheering on the Warren County Pioneer basketball team onto Victory with a pep rally to be held tomorrow in Warren County High School's Charlie Dalton Gym. We would like to invite all of the school board members to the pep rally and encourage everyone to be at the Saturday night's regional game. The student advisory members met with Mr. George on Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, and one of the topics we discussed was the school-wide ACT testing on March twenty-first. Ninth and tenth grade will be taking the pre-ACT, eleventh grade will be taking the ACT, and twelfth grade will be taking the ASVAB.
We've got some, uh, can, we've got some can tabs for you. We've been collecting. So, we've got those. We'll get those to you.
Okay.
Those will not.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. We can bring them over either way.
Okay.
Uh, speaking of, uh, human proof fundraisers, uh, Project Rantowich, I think in town's past has collected, uh, exhausted printer ink cartridges and toner cartridges. Are we doing that again this year?
Yes.
I think they are.
Yes.
The answer is yes.
Yeah.
And take them, deliver them where?
You'll just bring them to school. We can get them where they need to go.
Oh, okay. Okay, great. Great. Appreciate that. In this time of seven o'clock for the, uh, regional game, is that, is that, uh, it was kind of up in the air the last time I heard.
That's the last word that I've gotten.
Okay.
I made a PFLA meeting, and that's what they, they told us.
Okay, so it's official.
Yeah.
Okay, next on our agenda is operations. Mr. Cox?
I think we got recognition.
Oh, I missed that. Excuse me.
Yeah, so I think we have several recognitions tonight. So, uh, Ms. Hillis, do yours.
So, I've nominated, um, the majority of my custodial staff, so if it's a panel, just read the nomination letter. Uh, Bobby Ray is blessed to have a custodial staff that works well together on a daily basis. On days that school is not in session, you will often find them adjusting their schedules to allow them to work and eat together and hear their laughter in their hallways. Their camaraderie is often exemplified in the completion of larger-scale tasks together. Last week during weather-related days, this was evident when this talented group of people went above the required job description to install a new sensory wall for our students. While the cleaning and floor preparation was within their normal areas, cutting out vinyl decals, measuring and working on their hands and knees, taping and removing lint beyond their required hours was indeed serving your children, all in their socked feet. Later applying ten layers of wax to ensure that it was, that its protection wasn't the final step, but rather introducing our, our students and demonstrating the path for them further exemplified their dedication to both their, their jobs and our school. We're thankful for Teresa, Vicky, Mark, Megan, and Matthew, and recommend them for this honor. And so. And Matthew. And Mark is Megan's other half. I almost said better half.
It is definitely better.
Who has definitely been, um, making sure that everything was straight and then demonstrating for our kids. And then, uh, Ms. Teresa Frothingham is ill this evening, and Ms. Vicky Martinez is not present tonight. Oh, that's him! I'm sorry. It's not again. Excuse me. Ms. Vicky. And they're a wonderful crew to have at school. They're a lot of fun, and we're thankful for them.
You can open it. Yeah, I'll wait.
Thank you.
Awesome job. Congratulations. Job well done.
And just a note on employees. We've talked about that so much. Mark, Megan, and Matthew all moved into McMichael. They were all friends at Treveka. And so, we were blessed to have them come and be part of our community, too.
There you go.
Hi, Candace. Are you doing the next ones? You've got several, uh, awards with our positive behavior support.
So, I'm going to divide these in groups of three, if that's okay. So, first I'll ask Bobby Ray to come forward. And Deborah, please. So, I want to tell you about these first two schools. As you know, we work with response to instruction and intervention for behavior also. And so, at the recent Partners in Education Conference, they were, um, awarded, several of our schools were awarded things. They were all awarded for School of Recognition. And so, what this means is they have fully implemented Tier One support and Tier Two support for their students. But I want to tell you a little bit about each school. Bobby Ray has, we've really been focusing on suspension. I know we've reported that to y'all. Bobby Ray has decreased their suspension. Last year they had eleven days, and this year they only have five.
Oh, good.
And ninety-five percent of their students have only had zero or one major office referrals. And when I mean major office referrals, that means she has to deal with it. So, super excited for them. And then, Deborah, same thing, the School of Recognition, and they have decreased from seventeen OSS days to one this year. And ninety-seven percent of their students have only had zero to one major office referrals. So, congratulations to both of y'all. And next I'll ask Eastside to come up. Sure. So, I'll tell you a little bit about Eastside. They actually won a bronze-level model of demonstration school. And what that means is they are recognized that they can serve as a mentor to other schools in middle Tennessee for Tier One support, meaning they've set up those positive expectations for their students. So, a little bit about their, um, out-of-school suspension. Last year they had five days. This year they have six, but I really dug deep, and it's only two students. So, I think that's very comparable. But ninety-seven percent of their students have only had zero or one major office referral. So, I think that's so helpful, because as a principal, y'all can speak up. That's what takes time out of your day, right? And so, when teachers will be able to handle things.
Yes.
It's much better. So, congrats to y'all. And next we'll ask for Hickory Creek, Morrison, and West Elementary. And West Elementary. So, I want to tell you about these three schools. Um, they were all recognized for being silver level, level model of demonstration schools. So, what that means is, um, they can serve as mentors across middle Tennessee for Tier One and Tier Two support. So, meaning, you know, we work with Vanderbilt University with the Tennessee Behavior Supports Project, and they have recognized them as schools that if another school wants to do it, they will say, "Go visit these schools. They know what they're doing." So, for Hickory Creek, last year their out-of-school suspension days, they had eleven, but this year they have not suspended anyone out of school all year long, which is awesome. They've just found other ways to try to deal. Not that they haven't had discipline, but they've just dealt with it different ways. And ninety-seven percent of their students have only had zero to one major office referral. Morrison, um, last year they had thirty-one days of out-of-school suspension. This year they're down to sixteen. So, they've cut that in half this year, and ninety-six percent of your students have only had zero to one major office referral. And West Elementary, last year they had nine and a half out-of-school suspension days, and this year they're down to two. So, that's awesome. And ninety-four percent of their students have only had zero to one major office referral. So, we're super proud of y'all.
Great job. Very proud of all, all our schools and the work Candace and her team has done. Just very pleased with the signature. Appreciate you. Appreciate all your good stuff. Appreciate you.
They each, I meant to say this. They each received a banner. You want to show them what the banner looks like to hang in this school? That Vanderbilt gave them all. No, that's okay. It's a little lucky there. It's really nice.
It's too hard to roll up.
Roll it up.
Very nice.
Do you have the year something you can add, hopefully?
Year.
For next year.
That's looking good hanging in the gym.
Very good. Very good. Awesome. Congratulations to you.
Great work. Great work. Appreciate all your hard work.
And now, we'll handle that operations.
Okay, operations. This is. All right. First item is the calendar. It's in your packet, but just disregard that. We'll need to, I've got a paper copy here for you that, uh, as I was reviewing today, I found I had made a calculation error. So... Okay. Okay, so when I was counting the days, uh, I had overlooked one date that I did not count. So, we had to readjust. So, uh, readjusted on the front end and, and on the end. So, uh, Monday, the tenth, would be our registration day. Originally, it was the sixth, uh, and then we were going to have that Friday off and then start on the tenth. So, now, uh, we, Monday, the tenth, would be, uh, registration day. Tuesday, the eleventh, would be a vacant day or no-student day, and then twelfth would be our first day of school. And then on the back end, uh, the last day of school, our professional development day would be on the twenty-sixth. It was originally on the twenty-fifth. Uh, our last day of school will be the twenty-seventh, and high school graduation will be on the twenty-eighth of May. So, I just had to make that adjustment in the calendar. Everything else stayed the same. Um, but, uh, the feedback that I got, that was part of the feedback that I got, was mostly about the start date. Um, and, uh, leaving everything else pretty much the same. So, this is the calendar. Those are the additions. So, uh, this will be my recommendation for twenty-twenty-one school year. Everybody's in agreement with that?
I'll move adoption of the, the administration's proposed calendar for twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-one.
First and second. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Uh-huh.
All right, thank you. Sorry about that, but glad I caught that. Uh, the next item we have are our E-Rate mini-bids for approval. Katrina's here if you have any questions, but I'll try to explain this. Each year, um, the, um, we are able to go out with our E-Rate funds, which are reimbursement funds from the federal government. We, certain years, there, uh, there's a certain amount that we can collect and get. The state does a mini-bid approval. Uh, so what they do is they go out and, uh, ask vendors to bid on certain items, and then school districts can come in and, uh, take advantage of that pricing on those items. Uh, and what we, Katrina's recommendation, I think you can see and hear when we get to it, is that, uh, we had central, we had a hosting for our Wi-Fi networks at Hickory Creek, uh, the middle school and the high school. Central technology was the, the lowest, uh, bid there. And then, uh, internal connections in that second paragraph, I think Central Tech was also the low bid on that, which would include, you know, wiring, uh, without wiring. Um, what the school system's, uh, obligation would be, would be to pay fifteen percent of that if funded, which would be a hundred and eleven thousand, three twenty-nine, three thirty-three, uh, if it's funded. So, and this would be in the next budget year. So, uh, I think Katrina, you can kind of talk a little bit more about the, the internal wiring, but this would allow us, I think, to rewire our entire wireless network, pretty much?
No.
Okay.
Uh, no, this, yeah, that's next year.
Okay.
Um, this year, um, it's giving us discounts on, because you can't, I mean, there's a lot of, um, rules that, what you can do with this money. And what we have asked for with this money is battery backups. We've asked for more wireless access points. Uh, we have asked for some wiring in the schools, um, and, um, just those kinds of things. But it all, and you only have so much money because it's, it's set aside so much money per child at each school. So, you get pots of money at each school, and that's what makes it hard, because you might need more money at that school, but you can't do that. And so, when the bid came out, we never know what is going to come back in, because even though the state has those bids, we have to send it to the people that are included in that, and then they tell us their pricing, but we don't know what that's going to be. So, some of, even though this is the, you know, the cheapest bid, some of the pricing is over the amount of money we have. So, we would have to pay a hundred percent of that. But, um, when you add up the hundred percent and then the fifteen percent from the, from the amount that it does pay, that hundred and eleven is what we would owe if we get the funding. And I won't know until, like, July for sure if we get it, but we have to get this approved to get the paperwork started for E-Rate.
So, we, we've done this every year for the last several years. Um, you know, we take it to the county to approve, you know, as well. And it, it does give us a, you know, a good opportunity to get, you know, a lot of work done for, you know, fifteen percent of the total cost.
Yes.
Is a huge discount.
Right.
Uh, so, so, yeah, I, I would definitely recommend, you know, applying for the funding and approving, you know, this, this opportunity. And like I said, when we get that information back, then we can, you know, budget for that. So, I'd, I'd make that recommendation to approve the, the E-Rate. Um, I'll move that we accept it as requested.
First and the second to accept the E-Rate mini-bid approval. Any discussion?
Will this, will this bring, does this bring all the schools up to date the way they should be when you do?
It's an ongoing thing. Wiring and access points and all of that are about like, any kind of computer equipment. You got it updated all the time. And, but next year, uh, is when we start, they replenish all of our money. And next year, we will be, we'll get enough money to redo our whole wireless network.
Okay.
This is just some money that they had, we're in the sixth year of a cycle.
Okay.
And this is just some money they gave us to work with.
Okay.
Okay? Because like, next year is like over a million dollars.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
See, that caught my attention. That's why. [laughing] So...
Uh, those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, the next item we have is our, uh, fishing, uh, club, and I need to kind of explain, uh, that just a little bit. In your package, you have a, uh, recommendation from Mr. George, um, regarding the sponsorship for the club. So, I, I talked to a couple of board members individually, but I'll try to bring everybody up to date on where we're at. Uh, Mr. Holt, who has been our sponsor, uh, since the club was founded, I think in thirteen, is that right? Uh, in two thousand thirteen, has decided to step away from that role. And, uh, we've been trying to find a sponsor, an in-house sponsor, because this is a club, not a sport. So, TWSA does not govern the fishing, uh, you know, as a sport. So, it's a club. By our board policy, uh, all clubs has to have a staff, a faculty sponsor. So, uh, we tried, Mr. George has tried, uh, to find somebody. Nobody's willing to take that right now. So, Mr. Holt has agreed to take that on through the rest of the year as the in-house sponsor. Um, on the second-page part of that, Mr. Myers, Brad Myers, who is one of our SROs, uh, has agreed to go on the fishing trips with the group in a supervisory capacity. So, he is not a employee of Warren County Schools. He is an employee of Warren County Sheriff's Department. So, uh, everybody's in agreement on that. Mr. Myers has signed off on a, a, a waiver of temporary assignment. Um, and then what we'll do after the end of the year is we'll continue to look for a full-time sponsor for the club. And, uh, I have talked today with the, the group, the Booster Club, uh, and told them, you know, what they needed to do. They wanted to form an official school sport organization. I told them how to do that. You know, I talked with them about, you know, the future and school sponsoring students in our junior fishing club, because those two are connected. So, just wanted to bring you up to date on that. But basically, what I'm asking for the board to do is to grant a waiver of the policy to allow Mr. Myers to take the fishing club to the events on a temporary basis until we can get a, a, uh, full-time sponsor.
Sounds great that he's willing to do that now.
Yes.
Would, uh, make that motion that we accept that change in policy.
Now, second the motion.
All right. Have the first and the second. Any more further discussions?
Where, where is Brad?
He's at the high school.
He's at, okay.
Mm-hmm. He's at the high school.
Uh, we've had this discussion. I, I discussed it with Bobby, uh, a couple of weeks ago, and this looks to me to be the, uh, the best, most practical, uh, resolution right now. And, uh, I too am thankful Mr. Myers is willing to take this on. Uh, it should be pointed out, it's my understanding that the onsite sponsor is the safety officer.
Mm-hmm.
And this is, of course, this is always a concern. It's really got to be a major concern after this tragedy last week at Hickwick Dam. Um, so, you know, we, we never, we never can, uh, go too far in making sure that we've followed all the rules and that the safety procedures are followed without exception. So, I'm, I'm convinced that Officer Myers would, would do that.
Yeah. Let's vote on that. Those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion.
Okay. I think we have two items just in other additions that are not on your, uh, agenda. One, uh, I think on your table, you have a, uh, oh, we don't?
No.
Okay, we don't. Okay. The, uh, we wanted to talk about this, uh, what we did last year with the summer work schedule. You know, we did a four-day week last year, which seemed to have worked out pretty good. Uh, there is, uh, you know, our folks did an eight-and-a-half-hour day, I think, or eight-point-seven-five-hour day, uh, four days a week to get the number of hours that they work normally, five days a week. That enabled us to shut our buildings down on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. Um, and, you know, it seemed to have worked out pretty well. So, we need to schedule our professional development for the summer. So, if the board is willing to go, you know, that route again for our summer schedule, we would start that May the twenty-fifth, which is the Monday after graduation, and we would end that on August the third, uh, which is the Friday before the, uh, first full week of school, I believe.
We would return on August the third. That's a Monday.
Okay, it's a Monday. Okay, the Monday, the first, the first full week before school starts. Yeah.
So, your, your proposal is to adopt a four-day work week from May twenty-five to August three?
Yes.
If that's your recommendation, I'll so move it.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion?
We'll send out the detailed information to staff relating to number of hours and things like that.
All right. Those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion passed.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, and the last item is just, it is on your desk, I believe, and that is our pandemic plan and resources guide. Uh, just, uh, just the thick packet that you have. Just wanted to, to give this to you. Obviously, with, uh, coronavirus and, and other things, uh, we, we do have, uh, pandemic plans in place. Uh, if there is an issue or a reason that we have to invoke that, of course, this was developed, uh, several years ago uh, with the county and emergency management and the state, uh, when there was a outbreak of avian flu. Uh, so, we've amended that, updated that for, uh, issues that we might face in the future. So, this is really just us being prepared, uh, for something that might occur, hoping that it won't occur. Uh, but I wanted to give you a copy of that so that you would have that in your hand. We've sent that to all of our supervisors, all of our principals and department heads as well, as Mr. Haley at the county. Um, so, just wanted to have, have that in your hand. So, uh, if there's any questions, I'll try to answer what I know about the medical part of that, which is not as in-depth as I should, but, uh...
I just hope we don't have to use.
That's right. Absolutely.
Wash your hands.
Absolutely, yes, yes. And, uh, Sonia Walker, who's our health services director, she worked directly with doing that. So, appreciate her, her work, uh, on getting that together.
Thank you.
All right. I think that's it, Madam Chairman, for me.
All right. Next on to curriculum and achievement. Mr. Zegman?
Moving things right along here. Okay, well, that's good, because I've got twelve percent battery left. We're running through this quick. Okay. The, the only item we have this evening, uh, is an item on second reading, is policy BDDA visitors to schools. And we discussed this, uh, and, um, made sure it's all internally consistent and reconciled. And, um, so, I'm, I'm satisfied that's the case. Uh, pertains to visitors at schools taking pictures, videos, making any kind of electronic record of, uh, what goes on. Schools also require some, unless it is an athletic event or a major, um, uh, student program, that they will have to sign. will have to sign in. But that's already pretty much the procedure.
Yes, it is.
So that being the case, I'm going to move for adoption on second reading of policy BBDA.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Those in favor? All right. Motion passes. And last on our agenda tonight is facilities and resource management.
We discussed earlier, West. The panels are going up as planned. The new cafeteria is ready for spring break. They're planning on putting a ramp. They have to do that near spring break. They're looking for a better price on that and getting that done. Another thing that's brought up was AgBarn. We are going with summer mills, correct? Ristles, grist.
Yeah, summer town with grist.
Yeah, they were grist. And we're going grist some, and it's a price of sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and ten dollars, and that does include the walls and the concrete floor.
Yeah, that includes the concrete floor and the walls down, the side walls, not to the ground.
Boys are going to put in four thousand, five hundred dollars on that.
Yeah, forty-one thousand, five hundred. Yeah. So we approved that last time. So we do need a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
So a second?
Second the motion.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So be it.
So I think I'm hearing this right. We do got the concrete floor in this.
Yes.
Okay, we got... That's been an issue.
Yes.
I'm satisfied.
And the Bobby Ray, the damages, we've put myself, sell them at twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. After we get a list from Ms. Hillis, we're going to decide what we're going to do with that twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. Hopefully put it back in Bobby Ray on the needs that they have.
We'll need a... I think Madam Chairman, we'll need a motion to accept that since we're accepting that money, so we're going to need to call for a motion.
A whole motion?
Motion? How about a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion?
Of course, this is just basically, we're not swapping money. We're just withholding that amount from the final payment.
And we'll, you know, bring the list, itemize the list back to the board, you know, once we close the project. So when the fire marshal gives us a permanent certificate, we've paid our money to FTM, and the project's closed, then we'll bring that back, you know, to you all.
Any more discussions?
We've got those in favor?
Madam Chairman, that's all I have. Is that correct?
Yeah, we didn't do mayor. Yeah, we titled that.
Okay. Anybody have anything else for tonight?
Just one real quick question. I saw something in the email that I didn't have a lot of time to peruse it and all of the other emails that came in. Summer feeding program, what's our outlook for summer feeding program?
Fay has reached out to principals, and they are planning on having their summer feeding program. She's getting recommendations back and from principals about what programs that they are having and when, so she can plan for that. And we're also planning a robotics camp at the robotics center this summer. So we're meeting next week or next Friday with Larry and folks from Motlow. So we're going to try to do one week with, in conjunction with YSI. And then we're also going to do a second week that would be specifically for high school students where they can get a certificate at the end of that, which is in essence a two-thousand-dollar certificate for no costs. And it'll be a four-day clinic, but we're hoping to also serve lunch there as well from our cafeterias. So that's in process, and she's... That's what she was sending out today.
Okay. Do you have any numbers yet towards the budget?
Don't have anything yet, hard and concrete. The... I probably won't get those estimates until April. Of course, the governor came out with his proposal to the legislature, which has to be passed, but there was, you know, biggest thing was literacy funding for literacy program. Autumn and Carl and I have, you know, been working on that. They've been working on textbook adoption. Autumn's been working on the literacy portion of it. And if that's passed, then there'll be support as well as training and funding for teachers in our district and every district for literacy. There was about a hundred and seventeen million dollars for pay raise for teachers in that. Of course, that's distributed through the BEP, and, you know, they... He said he put four percent in the budget, so I'm just going to knock that fallacy out right now. There's not a four percent raise. It's four percent in the budget distributed through the BEP. So once we get the numbers, then we'll be able to start building the budget there. But there's also predicted to be a seven percent insurance increase. So that's in the budget. So until the legislature passes the budget, we're, you know, we're just kind of in limbo. We're starting to work on our end, on the local part of it, but until we get the BEP numbers, we won't have it.
So the raise for our personnel will be what our BEP numbers will be?
Pretty much, yes. And we're down about twenty-nine students from last year. So, you know, that could be, you know, one hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars, you know, in funding less. But we should get more, but we just won't know how much until, you know, we get that funding from the state. So that usually is in April, the end of April.
Regarding the teacher's money and what Governor Lee had in the state's address, which was essentially a budget outline, we just need to keep in mind that the governor proposes and the legislature disposes. So I think that's what I'll be saying. Don't count on anything right now. We've got to wait till this goes through the process. The visit at the state capitol, March sixteenth, is that right, Monday?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
Stand for Education, the WCEA and the TEA are teaming up and other teachers organizations in other districts. So this is a very important, maybe a critical time to show your support for stronger funding for public education. I think the governor is... He's made some favorable gestures in that direction. Also, of course, you probably noticed in his address, the two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar trust fund for mental health services for students and, if I'm understanding correctly, for staff. So those things need support. We have a very impressive surplus right now in state revenues. I don't know how much longer that will continue. Hopefully it will continue. But now's the time to be moving that money if we can, if we can influence that process in the direction of public education and addressing a lot of needs that have gone unmet or partially met for many, many years. This is our opportunity.
Want to update Madam Chairman too. The... Obviously, the weather has been a little difficult to deal with. So, you know, the snow again is forecasted for tomorrow. We have one weather day left. We have a professional development date left. So, you know, it looks like it's going to be another four AM, five o'clock morning decision, depending on what happens. It could come in, it could not come in, but we're, you know, under a winter weather advisory, you know, currently now. So we'll be monitoring that. But if we do use that last day tomorrow, then we'll have to, you know, determine whether weather takes us from that point. But, you know, we do have a professional development that we can convert if we need to. So we'll see how that goes.
Anything else? Okay. Motion to adjourn? We're adjourned.